Yeah, Paul, we're ready to go. We're live on Facebook.
All right, well, hey, thank you, David, and good evening to everybody, and we're doing our mass, God bless us all. But we have a really special event to commemorate and a special person to honor this evening. And we want to, we're so grateful for the opportunity to do this. We have with us a guest, Bethany McKenney from Summit County Council. And she and New Franklin Council have commendations to present to an individual by the name of Dustin Nist. And you may have read about Dustin, you might know Dustin. He's a Manchester grad and he's a son of Manchester graduates. And but most importantly, he was the right person in the right place on June 11th. When when there was a danger and he responded with duty. So we're going to honor Dustin for that this evening. For his brave and courageous act and 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 we'll talk a little bit more about the details of that here in just a few minutes. But before we go further, this time Dustin has a couple of family members with him. We're going to ask them to come forward and I'm going to ask Dustin to tell us who's with you tonight.
This is my mother Melinda and my grandfather Don. They've been a big inspiration of my entire life. I couldn't be more proud to have them as my family and the people who taught me kind of anything that I needed to know. Keep me out of trouble and keep me in line with everything, but I appreciate everything they did for me and the lessons that they taught me over my life.
Well, not surprising, what a gentleman. So Dustin, we have you here today to to honor the your meritorious service on June 11th. And just briefly, from council's resolution, saw a vehicle drive into the Tuscarus River, notified the fire department and entered the river. Gave life-saving aid to an occupant of the vehicle. Please share with us what you did, how it happened, how you garnered the courage to do what you did and tell us what happened that day.
Well, we were driving, I was driving home from work about five o'clock or so, maybe five twenty or so. I was going down Clinton Road. Anyone that's driven down that road knows it kind of tapers and it's very hilly, kind of dangerous road. And the car kind of sped up going down the hill and towards the bottom where the car dealership is. It I could tell it wasn't going to stop and almost T-boned into a white van with two occupants in it. There it was an elderly woman and an elderly man and they were bike riding. We kind of came to a stop and stared at each other. It almost seemed like five, you know, forever, but you know, it's just mere seconds. We pulled in and she called 911. I went over to get to Clinton Fire Department and we kind of.
There was a vehicle.
Oh, we didn't know, it just was a cloud of dust. Came up, so we kind of didn't know. I wanted to at least, you know, notify them since they were so close. We kind of ran around the corner to see the vehicle went over the railroad tracks and into the river. And seeing that it was first submerged, I just didn't even think twice. I handed in my wallet, keys and phone and started to go into the river since I kind of was familiar with the area. Since everybody that's been around the Clinton area knows that river is up and down in the matter of days. If it rained the night before, it'll be up, the next day it'll be down. So unfortunately, it had a pretty bad thunderstorm the night before and the car was almost fully submerged. So I figured there would be occupants in it and hopefully I could do something to help them out.
So what did you do?
Just broke down some tread or some leaves and sticks and tried to go down there and rescue them. Unfortunately, when I got to the car, all the doors were locked. Tried to get a rare, like I got busted railroad tight to maybe, you know, break a window out. Unfortunately enough, I was able to get the back window down. And was able to get, get the, you know, give them to unlock the car. And I was able, you know, keep her head up, make sure that she was okay until Clinton and New Franklin arrived. They, I mean, they did very well, so I give them a lot of respect. You know, the stuff they do on a daily basis.
And the idea, how long you were in the river before?
I, it was such, everything was so fast, I couldn't, it felt like forever, but it felt so fast at the same time, I couldn't even tell yet. It was unfortunate, you know, that Franklin passed away.
Yeah.
But it was, you know, you know, at least it wasn't two casualties.
Did you get to speak to the lady after the fact?
No, I talked to her son, Jack. Yeah, he was, you know, very thankful for it. He was very nice and virtual to talk to and sent me a card, so it was, you know, greatly appreciated.
Now, once the EMS got on the scene?
Very fast.
And then, like, did you stay in the water? Did you hit the water?
I stayed in the water until Clinton got down there. And then, once they got there, I didn't, obviously, I don't have any medical expertise, so I didn't want to start tugging or pulling her just in case, you know, if you know, break her back or legs are broken or something. So, once they got down there, I was, you know, I was able to keep the door open for them as, you know, Clinton Fire Department got them out. And then New Franklin arrived and was able to take it from there.
And then, and then the remainder of the day, I mean, what happens? You go?
I stuck around for about an hour, gave my, gave the report to Ohio State Highway Patrol and went home. And I walked in the door and I said you wouldn't believe it. She thought I was in trouble. I was like, no, not this time. No, so it was, it was a very humbling experience, but it was very, you know, it was almost a little unsettling to see, you know, someone that was married for almost fifty years past, so, you know, lose their beloved ones too, so it was unfortunate.
Grandpa, if I can call you that, Don, who happens to be a very accomplished amateur golfer. You you found out about it in sort of a curious way, or is that true?
Yeah, I I lived here for many years and I read it in the Beacon the next day. And I didn't realize Dustin was the hero in the case. And so I called up my son, Dustin's dad, and said, you got to read this article because we're so familiar with that area because we play a lot of golf at Chippewa. And I'm telling Dustin about it and he said, that was me. He made me a very happy and proud grandpa.
So Mom, what do you think when he walks in the door soaking wet?
So he was standing in my kitchen, he was soaking wet and muddy. And my first reaction was, what are you doing standing there getting the floor all messed up? And then he said, Mom, I have to tell you something. He was really upset. You could just see on his face something was really wrong. And that's when I just said, you know, what's wrong, what happened? And then he proceeded to tell me what happened. And we were just, it was just really surreal.
Well, I guess, and maybe to kind of wrap up, I mean, now, looking back on it, Dustin, as you, as it all happened, are you, you know, are you, does it all seem like a dream or are you surprised you knew what you did or?
I'm just glad I was able to be there and help. I mean, it was, it's kind of surreal still, but I was just glad that something was able to be done.
Well, that's just fabulous. Well, folks, if because of COVID, we have to ask you folks to to head back and then we're going to make some presentations here. Councilperson McKenney will will make a presentation, but and I'll give you a chance to say, just let me say this. You know, these are difficult times and they talk about you want something to help lift your spirits. And and then, you know, kind of at the same time, there's gee, what about the youth of America, you know? You know, what do we, you know, where's the fiber of the country going to come from and where's the hope for the future? Here it is. Totally humble, jumped into service and the way you present yourself again today, you folks got to be so proud. And it's such a tribute to you as a family to raise a young man like this. And we are so blessed as a community to have you in this community, to have a young man like this from this community. So I couldn't be prouder of you, but so let me just, and that was like that.
I just agree that, you know, to be, I thank God that you were the right person at the right place at the right time. And and you did the right things, you know, and, you know, whether it's instinct or, you know, so we're grateful to you.
Thank you.
And I I'm struck with your humility too, you know, you're not, you're not tooting your own horn. And but but we want to do this for you today and and just honor you for for the way you leaped into action, you know, without a thought for yourself.
I greatly appreciate the consideration.
Well, if you'd like to, Christine.
Sure. So Dustin, on behalf of Summit County Council, we would like to give you a commendation. I'm going to read it. In Greek mythology, the word hero refers to characters who, in the face of danger and adversity, display courage and the will for self-sacrifice. That is heroism for some greater good of all humanity. And at approximately 5:22 on the evening of June 11th, Dustin Nist helped save the life of an eighty-three-year-old woman after the vehicle she was in was a passenger in crashed into the Tuscarus River next to the Clinton Fire Station. Nist was following the vehicle on his way home from work from Castor, Carter Jones Lumber Company in Covley. Franklin Roth, eighty-five, Cleveland, was driving the nineteen ninety-three Buick Roadmaster with passenger Marley and Crouch, also Cleveland. Eastbound on Clinton Road. When the vehicle went left of center as it approached the intersection of South Cleveland-Masslin Road, the vehicle ran through the stop sign to eastbound going off the east side of the road, through a parking lot and over an embankment where it became airborne, crossed railroad tracks and landed in the river. Car became mostly submerged, leaning on the driver's side. And upon witnessing the accident, Nist immediately ran into the fire station to get help and then went back to the vehicle in the river, grabbed a railroad track timber and swam over to break open a window as all the doors of the vehicle were locked. After smashing through the black back window, he talked to Miss Couch, Crouch, who was coherent but injured and got her to unlock her door. Fearful of pulling Miss Crouch out since he did not know the extent of her injuries, Nist helped hold her head above water while they waited for rescuers to arrive. And Clinton Fire, assisted by fire departments from New Franklin and Coventry, arrived shortly afterwards to help safely remove Miss Crouch from the vehicle. Now therefore, be it be it known by all and declared by the Council of County of Summit, State of Ohio, that this council recognizes the courage and self-sacrifice that enabled Dustin Nist to be a hero that day. And we salute and commend him for his outstanding deed. We urge all citizens to join us in honoring this fine-upstanding gentleman in receiving this commendation for his dedication to the public cause on this fifteenth day of July in the year of 2020.
All right, well, Dustin, on behalf of New Franklin City Council, this is a resolution awarding a certificate of meritorious service to Dustin Nist. Whereas Dustin Nist, a resident of New Franklin, on June 11th, 2020, at risk of his own life, went to the aid of a person in danger. And whereas Dustin Nist saw a vehicle drive into the Tuscarus River, notified the fire department, then entered the river and in chest deep water gave life-saving aid to an occupant of the vehicle. And whereas New Franklin Council wishes to honor this courageous conduct by awarding a certificate of meritorious service to Dustin Nist, now therefore be it resolved in recognition of the heroic action of Dustin Nist in risking his life by coming to the aid of a person in distress. Council hereby awards Dustin Nist a certificate of meritorious service this fifteenth day of July, 2020. And I sure wish I could give you a hug and shake your hand. I accept this on our behalf. Thanks to all, thank you so much, and family for being here, Dustin for being who you are.
Thank you. I really appreciate everything you guys did for me.
Thanks very much.
So much.
Thank you, New Franklin Council, and thank you, Mayor Adamson.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Okay, well, we are zooming, so I need to get back in my office to join the Zoom meeting.
Welcome to the meeting, Paul. Is everybody with me? Hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and Paul looks about ready, but we can go ahead and get talk, start talking about our committee meeting this evening. I'm gonna go ahead, we have four first readings, a second, third are pending. We'll move right into Finance Committee with Jim.
Jim?
Hi there. We will open the Finance Committee meeting at six nineteen. Our first resolution is Resolution 20R thirty-six. A resolution establishing the part-time position of Service Department Administrative Assistant and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. So I understand that we did have somebody working in the Service Department in this capacity, kind of helping out part-time, correct?
Yes. And we know it was going to be part-time in transition, so it was just, well, we decided, could we fill this position? What would we need? Where would we want that person to work from? How many hours it might take and those kind of things? And we came to the conclusion that we wanted to have somebody physically down at the Service Department to handle calls, assist with calls. Brian, most of the time is running around with a cell phone full of phone calls and a notepad with the calls to return. And meanwhile, he's out there in the field trying to, trying to serve the people. So the plan would be to have someone there approximately five hours a day, generally from nine AM to two PM. We don't need a full-time person at this time. In addition to basically assisting with all the administrative issues, also the financial issues as well. The purchase orders and making sure they're coded properly and coordinating that with the Finance Director, watching the balances of the various funds. So there's, there's, there's a, it's a technical job and there's a lot to do, but it's not a full-time job. So what we'd like to do is is advertise, create the position, advertise and see if we can find just the right person to come on board as a part-time person. I don't know that it'll ever have to be full-time. So it could very well just end up being a permanent part-time position.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments about this?
I have, yeah, I do. I have zero doubt in my mind that Brian needs that help. I I know, I know he needs that help. I'm just having trouble doing it right now. I don't know if we should revisit this in a couple of months. I I I just feel funny adding another position when we're saying we're going to be in some financial issues, you know, possible financial issues. And so I don't know, I just, for me, I I know he needs it.
Yeah.
I mean, my goodness, I know it, but it's just, it's just a tough hurdle for me right now to to do that.
What I'd say is, and we did, we did take some time on this and and that was intentional to see how things were going to play out financially. As we sit here, I'm optimistic that that we're going to, that they'll make the changes that they need to make to take, let us take advantage of the funds that are there waiting for us. So I have every reason to believe that that'll happen and that we'll, we'll basically be working with, you know, the same level of funds we had before. To 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 put it off, so we put it off for some period of time. This would annually would come to about $20,000. So to finish the end of this year, it'd be about $10,000. And keep in mind, it'll probably take us a month to find somebody to get them in here. And, you know, if, so I I I respect what you're saying, Andrew, but I do think it's a position of need, quite frankly. We had, as we were, we were sharing it with our administrative, we asked our Administrative Assistance in Police Department to take this on as well as some additional hours in a transitional, you know, phase. And that transitional phase went on and on and on, and finally she said, listen, you know, it's time for you to find somebody else. So that's sort of what precipitated it too. So we we need to, we do have the need. I respect what you're saying, but I, I'm I'm comfortable that we can, that we could handle this within, within our budget.
And again, I don't, I don't doubt the need and I hope Brian's not to shoot and dagger. I mean, I certainly, I certainly understand that need. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Nope.
I I have to say, I I kind of agree with Mr. Fetterman. I know that this is a position that has been effective, having the the Police Administrative Assistant there helping out. And I agree that this may not be the right time to be hiring a new position. But, you know, this year, we we apparently are okay financially, but what about next year and the year after? Is is this something that the duties can be divided up between the the other administrative staff to, you know, take phone calls or whatnot where where we can get by without hiring another person?
Yeah, you know, one way or another, we'll get by. The idea is to have somebody in the building and that's, there's a geographic issue to it that we it we think could be much more efficient. Because, for instance, Brian has to stop by here on some rate, with some regularity several times a week. And so it, you know, it just makes more, it makes more sense from a efficiency standpoint. I mean, clearly, we're going to need this spot. You know, that's, you know, if we we can delay it, if you choose to delay it, but we're going to, we're going to have to come back and ask you again because we got to have a person. You know, I think what's the upside of it is that I think we can do it without, without a full-time employee. We have a full-time Administrative Assistant in the Fire Department. We've got a part-time administrative, you know, about a half-time Administrative Assistant in the Police Department. And and we have nobody in the Service Department, nobody. So, you know, I think, all things considered, there's just a definite need. And it's not going to go away. And, you know, I'm not concerned about, yeah, I mean, we're paying attention financially, but when we talk about next year, next year, every expectation is that, you know, revenues are back to where they're supposed to be and we're back in stride. And, you know, again, we're not, if we, if this was a full-time spot, we'd be talking about $100,000 by the time we added benefits. At least eighty, ninety. So we have a chance to do this for $20,000 annually. And again, only $10,000 this year. And we see how it works, so.
Well, I'd just like to say that it works within our budget or you wouldn't have done it or proposed it. And second, I look at this as a positive. We're going to be providing somebody that doesn't have employment right now, an opportunity to come to work, an opportunity to earn some money and fulfill a need that we have because these calls that aren't getting answered are also a reflection on us. So I'm going to support this.
I agree, Andrew.
Question, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy?
My question is, I apologize. You said we have the full-time administrative aid for the Fire Department and a part-time for police? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, what do those administrative assistants earn? Are they earning the same amount as this person will?
No, the the, they are at, I think, $16.40 per hour. So we've put a range in here of thirteen fifty to sixteen.
Okay.
Now, the full-time in fire, in addition to that, to that rate of pay.
Has benefits.
Has benefits, right. So we expect to put it in at the lower end. Yeah, with, yes.
And the part-time, it does not have the benefits and she's earning sixteen or he, I'm not sure which.
Yeah, it's sixteen forty. $16.40 per hour. So we put the range in here and, you know, we certainly would expect we'd start at the lower end, at the lower end of it. I mean, on the other hand, we're hoping to get somebody good because this, it's really an interest, it's it's not just answering the phones, which is a big deal of keeping up on those calls and helping him to keep up on those calls. But there's an accounting aspect to it. There's, you know, some understanding of finance. I'm really hopeful we can find somebody that maybe has been employed in the public sector that's not working right now, that would like to come back on a part-time job. I'm a high-deal candidate for this. And this would be somebody that's got some expertise. You know, the credentials of the person who might be. That, that we have some range then in terms of how we might want to pay that person. But Judy, your point's well taken. We're trying to be sensitive to the people that are already working here and we don't want to start them at top dollar.
That wasn't what I was asking. I was just wondering how many hours the part-time is working in the, I know the full-time is working forty hours a week. But how how much is the part-time for the place? Is that working out at twenty to thirty hours a week?
That sounds right, Susan, right?
Yes, yes. And she's been here since we were a township, so.
Okay. And she's always been part-time, Susan?
Yes.
And this would be more administrative. It would not be what you're saying, answering the phone. She actually would be running the office while Brian is maintaining roads.
I mean, that's a fair statement. She'd be the person answering the phone and be helpful with, but she'll have the other duties. And a lot of them have to do with the financial aspect.
You're like, it's an important job. Whether you want to admit it or not, it's a very important job. I'm just saying, though, she would actually be running that office. It wouldn't just be answering the call.
True.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody says she. We already got somebody picked out.
Nice.
I was just about to say that.
Wow.
Could be, so it could be a good male candidate out there.
Good point, well taken.
You ladies, but.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I just, I agree with Andrea that if we're missing phone calls and, I mean, it's, stuff's not getting taken care of. If we get through this year, it's less than half the year to go, like Paul said, under ten to, under ten or under. You know, we get through this year and if things crash next year, that it's not like we take this position now. Have to keep it forever, you know? And I've talked to Brian a lot of times, he ain't getting back to people for a few days and that, like, that reflects bad on us. And we can't, you know, keep up with our workload or whatever and somebody getting back with people about a lot, I agree.
I agree as well.
Request to wave the three readings on this?
Sounds good to me.
Next, move on to Resolution 20R thirty-seven. A resolution authorizing, no, we're moving on to Resolution 20R thirty-eight. A resolution authorized and transfer district fundee declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is our standard transfer in the amount of $150,000. Wave the three on this unless there's a question or concern. And really, I I'd like to ask, if if you're not talking, can you mute? I mean, the background noise is just. And I believe that's all we have for the Finance Committee, so we will close the Finance Committee at six thirty-one.
Right, thank you, Jim. Move to Community Development, Andrew.
Yes, sir. Community Development open at six thirty-two. Resolution 20R thirty-seven, a resolution awarding a certificate of meritorious service to Dustin Nist and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. I believe we've went over all of this. We won't read it all again, so be waving the three on this one unless someone has an issue.
I think we're good.
All right. All right, we will close Community Development at six thirty-two.
All right, thank you, Andrew. All right, move to Laws and Ordinances. Ms. Norris?
Thank you. The committee will come to order at six thirty-two. We just have one item on the agenda. Ordinance number twenty dash O dash zero two. An ordinance replacing ordinance zero five dash eighty-three and adopting regulations related to the registration of and solicitation by transit vendors operating with the city of New Franklin. Basically, there is a, an exhibit that in more detail goes over what this legislation means. But briefly, it talks about transit vendors will have to get a certificate of registration. They apply for it. We issue the permit upon reviewing their application. It's several pages long. We issue the certificate. They display the registration. They have to wear a name tag. They have to comply with the Do Not Knock Registry Program. Those are items that the administration will go with them at the time the certificate is given. If they do sales, they have to have a location that's in an area zone for it. And we can obviously revoke the certificate and there is a. obviously revoke the certificate, and there is a penalty. If you violate this, you are guilty of a minor misdemeanor on the first offense. So, did everybody have a chance to review it, and what are the issues or questions related to this exhibit?
I have nothing.
Paul, we've talked about this for a long time, replacing our, our old ordinance with this one. It's pretty thorough, it's pretty extensive. I, I won't come in and be a transient vendor. It's, I mean, the application process, the review process, it's going to stop people from coming to doors, is what I see.
Yeah, if I, if I could add a few things, if that's all right. This is, you're right, there's been work done on this. I think Councilmen Cotts and Fetterman were working on this at one point in time, or maybe, I can't remember, I think both of you or one of you, or in any of it, or neither of you, I don't know. In any of it, so we were moving towards this, and then, then COVID came, and then we declared a moratorium. We had a situation that developed last fall, where we had, we were starting to have some complaints about a particular vendor, and it made us take a look at the, what we had on there, you know, what, what the ordinance, as it existed, it was drafted a long time ago, and the law had changed to some degree. So, we started to take a look at it. We were aware that there is one nationwide vendor who is very aggressive in asserting constitutional First Amendment rights as it relates to door-to-door sales and solicitation. And they're also very good, and they're very effective, it's a big firm. They've litigated a number of these ordinances against municipalities that they felt were contrary to constitutional standards relative to free speech, and we've looked at those cases that they've cited, and they, they send it to us, Andrea, like a brief, and it's really well-written. And they got some pretty significant awards against some municipalities who decided to dig in and fight them on this. So, they, a couple other communities, and our, our law director, Irv Sugarman, represented two other communities when they drafted similar ordinances and had dealings with this, with this, one particular group that litigates these. So, while we were taking a look at ours, trying to make sure it would pass constitutional muster, COVID came in, declared another moratorium, said it didn't make sense to me having people knocking on people's doors during COVID. And, and we were going to get back around to this. We heard again from, from this law firm, and they were interested in how far along we were on this. And they asserted the fact that COVID is not a good, is not a viable reason to suspend door-to-door, and they sent some case law to support that. I'm not saying I think that they're right about that, but there was a court somewhere that said they were right about that, and it happened to be a federal court. So, we decided we needed to get back to this. It wasn't that we were ignoring it, there's been so much on the plate, so what I'm getting to is this, we took another hard look at it, we put it in place, I think it fits a lot of the bill that we're looking for, there's more details in here, there's a shorter term that will issue these for, under the old statute, it would, they had them for a year, and this is ninety days. We've expanded some of the hours, and they're asking for even a further expansion, I sent it over to them to have a look at. But there's plenty of case law that says you have to let them knock on those doors until nine o'clock at night. You can't just say dusk to dawn. Yeah, I know, Tony Shaken and Sad and I'm agreeing, but the courts have said that that's, that's reasonable business hours, and now they're asking, they, they're, they're asking, they think they ought to be able to get out there even earlier than ten AM. We'll see. What we did add was the do not knock registry, the do not knock registry. And we will have that in place, and citizens, once, if you pass this, we'll separately set that up. People will be able to go online or call us or whatever and put themselves on that registry, and when somebody gets one of our, the registrations to, to go out and be a vendor, they will also get a list of the houses they're not allowed to knock at. There's also a provision, if a person just wants to put up a sign that says no trespassing, no peddlers, no solicitation, that's, they are bound to honor those as well. So, we're going to give the residents an opportunity for the first time to tell people, we just don't want you to come knock on our door. And so, that's another piece of this. The last thing I do want to say is, you know, we probably need, you know, I don't know what council's intention would be, I would certainly expect to go at least to a second reading, because a couple of these issues have come up, and, and there's one or two things I know we're going to have to tweak. We've, we've got the fee in there for one vendor, and there's an intention that the vendor would, would pay the hundred-dollar fee, but if they had five or six people, they wouldn't all have to pay the hundred-dollar fee. So, there's going to be some separate fee for, for the extra people under the one certificate. But there's really some good screening, too, by the way, that we're going to do on these people that, that's in the ordinance, that what kind of car they're driving, you know, do they have a record, have they ever been denied a license, et cetera? So, I'm sorry to go on so long on that one, but it's, I think it's going to be really nice when, and we're close on it, and so we're, we're open to discussion and suggestions, and I'm sure we'll do some tweaking on it by the time we get here to the next council meeting.
Exactly. I was going to recommend that we give at least one more reading. There's no reason it needs to be passed tonight. Any other, anything else for the committee? We'll go ahead and close at six forty. Thank you.
I do have, if it's not too late.
No. We read the bean at six forty.
Paul, you answered pretty much every question that I, that I highlighted on here, so I appreciate that. By, the only other question I have is, why, why should we administer a do not knock program? Why not just use NOPEC? And they've already got the program in place, they've got the signs, people can re-register, they send out cards every year for people to re-register, so, so we don't have to worry about constantly trying to get new residents or old residents to re-register, or whatever needs to happen, and just let NOPEC do it at no charge.
I'm not adverse to that, I certainly can certainly look at. I, I didn't want to make it part of the resolution. When NOPEC offers that package, they, they suggested with the, they actually have sample legislation for the transient vendor ordinance, and they, and at least, now, I'm sure they're not, well, I don't know the answer to this, but when it was presented to us, it was, here's the legislation that you would adopt, and pursuant to that legislation, we would monitor the, the do not knock, and, and the legislation they had wasn't comprehensive enough. So, since we had to do separate legislation, I didn't want to use theirs, but I'm, I'm certainly open, and, and we'll inquire if we can, if we can partner with them, and I expect we'll be able to, because they're pretty reasonable.
Sure.
Partner with them in trying to help administer this and get the signage, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I think we can use NOPEC, and that way, the, the administrative staff isn't having to, you know, do that part of it, and they take care of advertising it, and spending the money, and providing signs and notifications to put on doors and whatnot. So, I, I think what was written here, and like I said, you answered all the questions I had about it, looks great, and I think we could get NOPEC involved. I, I think that'll just really make it even better for everybody there. That's all. You, you may close now.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close. Thank you for your comments, Jim, I appreciate it.
Hold on, hold on.
Andrew, I'm sorry, I just have one comment, because of what, because of what Mr. Cotts said. Didn't we have a lady from NOPEC that spoke on this at the meeting?
Paul, could you hear? Somebody come and talk to us about this, yes.
Yes, she did speak about that, so I think that would be an excellent idea, because they evidently had done the research.
Yeah, no, that's fine, by all means, I'll reach out to them.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you. We're going to close again at six forty-three.
Anybody have anything else for any of their committees? Andrew, did you have something that you wanted to, you get in there? Yeah, you good? All right. All right, so if not, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the City of New Franklin Council Meeting at six forty-three this Wednesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty. Like, to see, see if we all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Cotts?
Here.
Mr. Hargit? Mr. Hargit?
Terry.
You're on mute, Terry.
Terry, you need to unmute. Terry.
Nod, Terry.
Wave.
That works.
All right, I got Terry's here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Tony, you're on mute, too.
Here.
All right.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here, thank you. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of July first, twenty twenty.
Second.
First and second, any discussion on the minutes? Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Terry, at the, at the right-hand top of your screen, if your picture, there, if you highlight over there, it should be a mute and unmute button. You can't see it until you put your cursor up there.
Mine's in the lower left.
There's two of them, Tony.
Okay. I got the lower left.
Yeah, well, I just thought it would be easier if he just went on his own picture up at the top, and the top right-hand cornering the picture of you.
Or just nod.
Should I wait for a verbal?
Terry.
He's nodding, that's, he's fine.
Okay, Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Right, that passes seven to zero, thank you. Like to also make a motion to approve the financials for June twenty twenty, subject to audit.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
I just talked to him, oh, he just said yes.
No, 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 I didn't hear him.
Was that a yes, Terry? Nod your head.
Yes.
He's still on mute.
I'm lip, I'm lip reading, yes.
Yeah, they're having trouble with the connection, said they might just turn off.
There you go.
All right.
Mr. Hargit, say yes.
No, I muted it. All I did was sneeze.
Mr. Hargit, say yes.
Yes.
Fabulous.
All right.
Thank you.
That passes seven to zero. All right, we're going to move into our public comments. I haven't seen anything come up yet. Katie, did we have anything, like, come in early, or?
Nothing early that I'm aware of, and I haven't seen anything on Facebook either. I put up a notice at the beginning of the meeting when it first started for anybody to post anything there, and nothing has come in yet.
All right, we'll give it just a minute here, because it is, it's behind a little bit on Facebook.
Yeah, about ten seconds.
Ten seconds, is that what it is? So, we only got to wait ten seconds?
Hey, you know, while, while we've got a minute, I want to thank Robert Keith. First of all, Katie always does such a great job, but we would not have been able to do that presentation to Dustin without Robert Keith. Once again, he stepped up and came up with the ideas to make that happen, so I meant to do that previously, but I want to do it now. Really, really appreciate everything he does for us, but he stepped up and made that possible today, he and Katie.
All right, yeah, thank you, Robert, if you're out there somewhere. All right, I ain't seen anything. Katie, anything?
No.
All right, here we go. Again, we got four first readings, no second, third, or pending legislation. We'll move into Resolution number twenty dash R dash thirty-six, Kelly.
A resolution establishing the part-time position of Service Department Administrative Assistant and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution twenty R thirty-six.
Again.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty R thirty-six.
We got a first and a second, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
The no for me.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
You know, I do have reservations, Kelly, but I am going to vote yes, because I think the phone is really important, and I don't think Brian can handle both.
Thank you, Judy.
But I have reservations with the money.
All right, well, thank you. That passes six to one. Thank you. We're going to move to Resolution twenty dash R dash thirty-seven, Kelly.
A resolution awarding a certificate of meritorious service to Dustin Nist and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution was assigned to Community Development. May I move that we waive the three?
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Jones?
Judy, you there?
I'm sorry, honey, I had it unmuted. Yes, yes, I apologize.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes. I move, we adopt Resolution twenty R dash thirty-seven.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Other than congratulations, that was something pretty special Dustin did. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven, zero, thank you. We'll move to ordinance number twenty dash O dash zero two, Kelly.
An ordinance replacing ordinance zero five dash eight three and adopting regulations related to the registration and solicitation by transient vendors operating within the city of New Franklin.
This was assigned to laws and ordinances. Dave, we're going to, if you don't mind, take at least another two weeks on this.
All right, timers requested, time is granted. We'll move to our last piece of legislation, Resolution number twenty dash R dash thirty-eight, Kelly.
A resolution authorizing the transfer funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on twenty R thirty-eight.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty R thirty-eight.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Again, we have no second, third, or pending. We'll move right to the mayor's report.
Thank you, and thanks to council for sponsoring and initiating the idea and going forward on that commendation for, for young Mr. Nist. So we appreciate it. I know his family did as well. A couple of things, it's been a good week despite all the madness out there. The, we announced earlier, the, we filed the deed for the ODNR grant. And so the city of New Franklin now has close to eight acres of lakefront property on Turkey Foot Lake. We picked up a parcel about three and a quarter, three and three quarters, just short, just shy of four acres, 250 feet of lakefront. And there may have been some confusion on one of the websites or one of the Facebook pages, but we did not pay anything for that. That was a grant from ODNR, and for our part, we agreed that we would maintain it for recreational purposes. And so it really, really gives us an opportunity for expansion over there. Our, you know, our intentions are to try to, to put some dockage in there, not for rentals, but, but for access to the events that we'll do at the Tudor House. It just opens up a wide range of possibilities for us, and that's one I think that, well, we're really, really grateful to ODNR. We're really happy for, that's, that's one that people out here will enjoy now, and they'll enjoy it even more 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. So that's a big deal, and we're excited about it. Next, we, we were given permission late yesterday to issue the press release confirming that we were successful in the Ohio EPA water funding grant program. It's called a principal forgiveness program. And we've been pursuing that for about, well, the idea sprung about a year and a half ago, and the whole idea is to try to get water up to State Route 93 and also make it available in the community for people who want it. But to get it to 93 for development purposes is a big deal. I will tell you, as you well know, that nobody's in a hurry to overdevelop out here, and it's not like people are breaking the door down either. But we'd like to get some service industries out here. 93 is the place to do it. And we learned about a year or so ago, it was going to take $4 million to get that done. And where was that money going to come from? And we got plugged into, we had an insight into this grant program through the EPA. We had cooperation from 12 of the public water system businesses up there, and we made the application, and the award was announced. And you know how tough it is to get money out of anybody this summer, but there were only two projects in the whole state that were granted funding, and we were one of them. And they only, I think the total that they gave away, that they granted was somewhere in the range of three or $4 million, and we received 2.1 million of that. So of this $4.2 million project, we received 2.1 million by way of principal forgiveness from the Ohio EPA. In addition, we had an old contract with Aqua, and that's a water provider, where they had agreed to bring $1 million to the first project that we did together. And we had conversation with Aqua and suggested that that had been written quite a while ago, and couldn't they come up to, well, try to get it to 2 million, but we got them to 1.5. So Aqua is, is picking up 1.5 million of this project. So we, we brought, well, $3.6 million is coming into New Franklin for this water project. And we're excited about it. There's information on the website about it. They are doing the engineering, they're doing, they're up and running already on it, and they may break ground as early as this fall. Probably it'll be towards the end of next year that it's in the ground. The route, et cetera. There's no mandatory tie-in for anybody in New Franklin. The, the balance of about 500,000 will be fine, well, it, we're waiting for the contract now, and council's going to have to approve this. But the 500,000 is financed over 30 years. That's part of the EPA loan program. And we think it's going to be, it's a good chance it's going to be a zero interest. And if not, it'll be like 1.5. So to service that debt is going to take about $20,000 a year. We'll be collecting lot fees when people sign up to service that debt. So we expect this to be a wash for the city. And in, 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 in response, we're going to have water up on State Route 93. And again, there's no mandatory tie-ins for anybody. There's no assessments for anybody on this water project. So more details will follow. It will keep you all posted. Had a long meeting with Aqua today, and when they get all the paperwork put together, we'll, we'll put it in the form of resolution and bring it to your attention. So we're really excited about that one.
Before you move on, I want to congratulate you on that. That's, that's incredible. Fantastic. Thank you.
Oh, I appreciate that.
You've been working hard on it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Another project we talked about about a year and a half ago was trying to, was regional dispatch. And I sent out to everybody a fact sheet on that. I think either I sent it late yesterday or early today. Stuff's happening pretty quick. There's a lot going on. But we're revisiting this regional dispatch. Summit County is revisiting, is looking at regional dispatch. It's a wave of the future. We knew that. We couldn't put it together quick enough with Green to avoid actually having to go to the expense of becoming primary PSAP in 2019, 2020. And for a couple of reasons, we didn't think Swisscom was a, was a good fit. A big part of that is the computer-aided dispatch. The county is pushing for Tyler, New World, and they want the whole county to be on that computer-aided dispatch. And unfortunately, we are on what's known as Sundance. Swisscom is on Sundance, but that's going to be a thing of the past. So Green is on, already on Tyler. So we look back again, the county's program is, it sounds interesting, the dispatch center is going to be up in Talmage. They're doing some pricing on it right now, but they don't really know who's going to be part of it, whether it's going to be the sheriff, is the city going to be in. Stowe currently dispatches for, for Talmage and for Cogga Falls, but for Stowe to become part of that cog, it's a ballot issue, and that's not going to be on the ballot till November. And it's a big question of when that might happen with Summit County. It is clearly the wave of the future. But every, the ideal, and we've, we've been researching this one, too, and we've talked to a number of different cogs, dispatch cogs. And there's one up in Cogga County that has about, oh, about 100 municipalities involved in it. But one of the things they, what they, what we learned from them is that you, you want to have a redundancy center. You want to have a second center. So in the event there's a, you know, a natural disaster at one center, you can pick your dispatchers up and, and they can immediately dispatch from the other center. So we know that Summit County is going to need that redundancy center. And unfortunately, it's not going to be Swisscom. They're on a different page. So we started the conversations again with Green about, can we go ahead and put together a council of governments with Green and create this regional dispatch there? And we know Lake Moore contracts with them. Clinton is at our end. Coventry as well contracts with Green. I'm repeating a lot of what's in that proposal, but just for the public, so you'll know what's going on. So we're starting to crunch the numbers on that. At least initially, it appears that we could be part of this within the budget that we're spending right now for dispatch. And for our perspective, that's a big deal because staffing is, continues to be difficult in a small department like this. So there's a number of reasons why it would be attractive to us, not to, not the least of which is this partnership with Green on something. So we're moving on that and take a look at that. And as we, if we reach a point, and hopefully we'll reach it soon, where there at least a consensus between the two administrations that we think this will fly. And when that happens, we'll introduce legislation to start the process. And as I indicated, it would require the council's approval to form this council of governments, and then also for purposes of a joint dispatch. So we had that legislation drawn back in 18, and we never, I don't, we never introduced it, I don't even think, or if we did, we withdrew it because we just couldn't make it fly. So we're working on that one also. There's two more things, kind of quick. And they both, first one has to do with money again, as most everything does. The, they're still working on trying to get the right language in place between Washington and Columbus so that we can actually receive the full 800,000 or so. We already got 400,000 of it, another 400, and then we'll be able to use it. So everybody expects that's going to happen, but you know, it's just kind of going slow. And then there's another 800,000 right behind that, that, you know, once, once we hit go on that, that's why, you know, that that would pretty much cover what we think might be our shortfall. Nexus, when they came in, presented to everybody how much property tax the various municipalities and school districts would receive. And, and it's a declining balance as all, as, as they depreciate the asset, but it started at about $350,000 a year and went down a little bit each year. But this first five years or so was 300,000 or more. So we were expecting to receive that, and lo and behold, and the state did their, their appraisal, and Nexus appealed that. And in their appeal, they basically said it should only be worth about half that much. And so suddenly they wanted to only pay half. And that sat down in the, the tax commissioner's office until, I don't know, two days ago, they issued an opinion, or maybe last Friday, I can't remember which. And they, and they denied Nexus's initial appeal on that. Now, they have a right to appeal that to the tax, to the tax court, whether they will or won't, who knows. It was a really well-reasoned 30-page decision that came out of there. And it would seem to me the kind of decision that should, should pull, survive further appeal. When the state did their appraisal, it turned, our, our number went up to the range, in the range of 500,000 as opposed to the 350. So we're reasonably optimistic that that will hold up. We haven't received any of it yet because the appeal is pending. But that's another nice number that's waiting out in the wings. And, and we've been active with that, I can tell you, in terms of lobbying aspects. So we're trying to bring that one home as well. And the last thing I would say is careful on the lakes. A lot of boats out there. And there's been a couple tragedies already, and it's going to be, continue to be a long, hot summer. So please show as much restraint out there and common sense as you can, and be careful, because it's not really the Lakers, it's, I think, as much as it is the people that come out here and aren't used to boating. So anyway, be careful out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Judy, did you want to say something, address the mayor at one point?
I do, if you don't mind. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Paul, these are big issues. These are not little issues that you have brought up tonight. These are really good news for the city. Tremendous news in every one of them. And on the water, the residents out here will be able to hook in if they want, they four feet. But that is fantastic, the money that's going to be paid. And the regional dispatching, A+, especially if we can stay on with our dispatch also, that would be wonderful. Those are not little deals. Those are huge deals that you've mentioned tonight. So I'm really, really supportive of them, and I think everybody else is, too.
Yeah.
You're doing a great job, Paul. Everybody appreciates it.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for the mayor? All right. Susan, you have anything for us?
Not too much. Just to let you know that the administrative building and the office is open to the public now, and our staff is in there. Not all of us all the time, but we, the, the place is being manned all the time during business hours. So we are open for business. We've got new sets of locks and, and new glass windows. So it's, it's a lot better situation safety-wise and COVID-wise, so we're happy about that. Then our, as I said last time, our financial report for 2019 has been completed, and we are, at this time, they're finishing up the audit for 2019, and I should be receiving information about that probably by the next meeting. They should, they're supposed to finish up by the end of this month. That's.
All right, thank you, Susan. Move into old business. Any old business?
Old business? It's Judy.
All right, no old business. Wait a second, because that's usually when somebody goes, oh, wait a minute, I got something. All right, new business?
Going once, going twice.
New business. You with us, Jim? There he is, all right. No new business. All right, now we're going to see if anybody's got any questions for us out there. I haven't seen nothing. Katie, anything?
No, nothing has come in.
All righty then. You gave heads up a little while ago, so somebody had something, they'd have come in by now. All right, then, no executive session?
Well, no, there is. We did need an executive session, and what I suggested is that, I said, I hope you guys got the email on that. That, no?
Did it just come? When did it come?
Oh, I sent it a day or two ago. All right, what, I apologize. I don't know what happened. But what we can do is adjourn to executive session, you could, we could advise the folks that we're, we're not going to take any action. I'm not suggesting any action. And whether or not, and I would suggest at that point, we could conclude the broadcast. When we come back on, we could record the Zoom as the minutes, because generally when we come back on, as you know, all we do is, you know, reconvene the regular meeting and go to adjournment. So that would be the way to do it. But there is something I need to address you on an executive session as relates to police personnel issues.
Was that in your open meetings email?
Yeah, I think so. I can't remember which.
I read through it for a while. I'm like, holy cow.
Oh, yeah, it probably was in that one.
Okay. All right. So I guess.
Is that something we can do?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop the, the live stream and then just continue the Zoom, Zoom meeting.
Okay, and we will, let's see.
Let me get this going here, Paul.
Kelly can't be in there, or Susan.
Or me.
Or you.
But I, I can be in there if you invite me in there.
Yeah, actually, Susan can be in there. Yeah, she probably should.
All right, here I go. I move that we go in. We ready to do this?
And you want to announce when the next meeting is in, in the event that we don't come back on live stream?
It'll be, our next council meeting is August 5th, 2020, committee's at 6:00. I'm guessing we're going to be Zooming again unless something happens different.
Oh, yeah.
So. I'm going, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of police personnel issues.
Second.
You got a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes. No formal actions will be taken during our executive session. So we'll give it a minute here.
So I'll leave the meeting.
Okay.
And then, how will I know when you guys are back up? Do roll call.
We can't, we didn't set it up to go into a separate room, did we?
No, but we can close out of this one, and everybody can use the same login information. I can restart it.
Oh, that sounds good. That makes sense.
Who, now what are we going to do?
Well, when we're done in executive session, we will all leave this meeting, and then we'll sign back onto this meeting again. The same login information that we used to sign on the first time today.
Just like if you were going into a meeting.
Okay.
Do we need to do that, or can?
I can call, Kelly, I can call you when we get ready to come back.
Okay, perfect.
You can jump into meeting, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, and she'll just sign back on. Okay.
And Katie, you can just, you're there in the office somewhere, and I can, the mayor can let you know when you can get, come back on, right?
Yep, I'll just leave my office, and I'll leave you guys going.
Okay, and then we're just going to have Susan come in with us, so we're good. And Kelly, I'll call you here or text you.
Okay, sounds great.
Then I'll wait for you to come on, and we'll get back at it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, David.
You bet. All right.
Double check on your phone if you're following, David, but the live stream did end. Double check on your phone if you're following, David, but the live stream did end, correct?
Okay, let me check.
That's important.
Yeah.
I'm checking on this side, too.
Yeah, it's. Let me see. Yeah, I think we're off, because I ain't seen nothing coming on.
Same for me. I just wanted to double check. Okay.
Right, cool. All right.
All right.
Right.
Well, here's what's up. That's our, that's our minutes.
All right, so here we go. I move that we adjourn our executive session and resume the regular council meeting.
Second.
You have a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones? Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes, all right. There was no formal actions taken during our executive session. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
As have it. Thank you, everybody. Again, our next council meeting will be August 5th, 2020.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.